Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
How are you?
Better.
Good? All right. So, we're gonna approve the minutes in the special meeting. Let's do...anyone do some discussions? Let's see, March 2nd? Yeah, we had, um...
The first meeting.
The first meeting was to discuss if we wanted to...how we wanted to have the roads show on the budget.
I'll make a motion. And then the second was our regular meeting. Approve the minutes of the special meeting on March 2nd prior to our regular meeting. Then our regular meeting on March 2nd and the meeting we had here brought in the charter revision and then the meeting with the library trustees. All right?
Sure.
Is that right?
Yep. Well, March 2nd was...special meeting was, yeah, budget roads.
Right.
Then regular meeting.
Our meeting.
And special meeting was charter, the 15th.
It's for this one.
Yeah, and then the last meeting, you're right, the library.
Oh, we had that. The library.
There were two meetings.
We had been at the charter this weekend.
Right. Did you put them all under one? We had two separate meetings. We had one for...
One to amend the charter revision commission to ten...
Yes.
And those were from...to amend the amount of people out of the charter revision commission.
Right.
That was right before the library.
And then we went...and then we drove... And then we went over to the library.
Same night.
Okay, so maybe I don't have one.
I forgot to put that on. All right, so we'll just...
There were two, March 30th.
Yeah, so we can just do the library one at the next meeting. That's fine.
All right.
All right, so... The 15th was the charter.
Correct.
That's right. That's when we sent the charter.
The 30th was the charter. Well, there were two charter meetings.
Right.
Capital Plan was on the 15th.
That makes sense. There you go.
Okay?
Yep.
All right.
That's right. All right, so I'm making a motion to differentiate special meeting, um, March 2nd and our regular meeting, and the meeting on the March 15th, and then the first, um, meeting on the...
First special meeting.
First special meeting on March 30th.
Held here.
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. All right, public comment. Anybody's quiet? What does anybody say? Okay. Um, the fourth item on the agenda is to...I asked Jim Monopoly to come this evening. He is the health director of CRAD, which is the health district that I would like us to join. He's here, I can have him talk briefly about CRAD, which I think would be a good thing. We need to have a town meeting, and the town meeting will be April 21st, which is a Thursday at 7:00 at the firehouse. So, um, in order for us to go through what we're required to do to join the chamber, um, it has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. I have lots of documents here. I had made copies of things that you both have. Um, I also have a memorandum of agreement that you don't have, um, that both of you can look at. And, uh, Jim, why don't you, I don't know, go ahead?
Well, good evening. My name's Jim Monopoly, like they said, and I'm health director at Connecticut River Area Health District. Just a little bit about myself, I've been in public health now for over 30 years. I started out as a sanitarian with the city of Middletown, and then I went on to be chief sanitary in Westport, Weston Health District, and the East Shore District Health Department in Bramford. And then in 2000, I became health director in Bramford for the health district. And I had a short stint...my wife and I joined the Peace Corps in 2009, so we were there for two years, and then when I came back, I became health director at Connecticut River Area Health District. The health district right now is...has its office location in Old Saverick, and it was formed in 2006, so we're one of the newer health districts in the state. Uh, it's a three-town health district right now. We have the towns of Clinton, Old Saverick, and Deep River. Uh, and that's about a population of 28,000 people. Our Board of Health is made up of five board directors, two from Clinton, two from Old Saverick, and one from Deep River. And unfortunately, we lost our chairman, Dick Smith, who was the first selectman of Deep River, was the chairman of our Board of Health, so that's a huge loss for us right now. We're trying to rebound from that, actually. We're a fairly small health district. We have five full-time employees, and basically about five contractional employees, and we part of...put out an awful lot of work for a small health department. We...you may or may not be aware of this, but there's a thing called the 10 Essential Services that we strive to fulfill, and those are obligations by local health departments to provide services and have a level of professionalism and work towards prevention. All those things that health departments should be doing are describing the 10 Essential Services, and that, right now, that's a statute that we're obligated to fulfill. So, we do fulfill in many ways the 10 Essential Services. I don't say we do everything in an extremely great fashion, but we do, um, fulfill those 10 Essential Services in many, many ways. There's still some room for improvement. Now, with the prospect of Haddam joining our district, uh, from a Board of Health standpoint, uh, Haddam would have one representative on the Board of Health based on population, so for every 10,000 population or part thereof beyond that, uh, you're entitled to one board member. So, Haddam would have one of six then, board members or directors. As far as staffing, I would increase my staff. I would, um, hire probably about a half-full-time...I'm still working on this a little bit, but a half-full-time sanitarian, a half-full-time health educator, and a half-full-time public health nurse. Right now, we have one person fulfilling the public health nurse position, and she's also our preparedness coordinator. We would also look to hire a dedicated preparedness coordinator. So, I would have dedicated professionals in my department, just with the addition of the town of Haddam. And that's a very exciting thing for me, because that's what I've been striving for in the last 40 years since I've been here. We would, uh...we're proposing...we propose to the town to start off at a per...local per capita rate. That's the contribution that local towns contribute towards a health district, and then we get additional funding from the state and state and federal grants. So, we propose to have Haddam come and join our health district at the $9.60 per capita rate that we've been...uh, it's comparable to what they were paying in Chatham Health With us being a small health district, there's, uh, um, you know, a lack of efficiency based on the numbers of people. The more people you have in the district, the more efficient you become, because you get certain levels of funding. So, this helps us tremendously, just adding the population of Haddam to our health district from a financial standpoint, and we're able to lower our per capita rate to the towns...the other three towns in the district to a much more reasonable level as well. So, this is something that is, I think, is a win-win for both the town of Haddam and the Connecticut River Area Health District, and I look forward to being the health director. Does anyone have any questions? I know I wrote through a question.
So, what I'd like to do for tonight is if...
Sure.
So, having it be the Board of Selectmen meeting, have the board...have the board members ask a question. So, when we go to the town meeting, we'll have it open for public Q and A.
Okay.
So, um, just a couple other things to add on. Um, you know, the level of what we're...what we have been receiving from Chatham is someone had been in the office anywhere from half an hour to four hours a week. So, um, we'll have someone in the office. Granted, they're, you know, gonna be also working in the field a lot of what they're gonna be doing, um, a minimum of eight hours a week. So, that should cover two mornings. Those hours would be set. One of the other things is being part of Chatham, they're in a different emergency area than the town of Haddam is, so by joining with, uh, CRAD, we can now be part of the same emergency area that we are with our neighboring towns. The other thing is that there's the mass dispensing area that we need to go to if there's some type of vaccination or medication that needs to be handed out. There's some controversy about where we belong. Middletown thinks we're in Middletown, Chatham thinks that we belong to Portland, there's some questions about really where we belong. So, Jim has already spoken to, um, the Department of Public Health, and we can grant...ask permission to go into the mass dispensing area that is part of this area, so we'd be tied in with the communities here instead of having to worry about getting to Middletown and Portland, so we'll be able to do that. So, there was a lot of win-wins.
Yeah, if I could just elaborate a little.
Yeah, sure.
Liz just said, um, our health district is obviously spread out, and what we would look to do here is decentralize our office, where we would have a presence here in Haddam, because we have the town of Deep River also, so a sanitarian would be dedicated to this area, Haddam, Deep River, um, so they're not traveling back and forth. And likewise with the mass dispensing area, um, we have a seven-town mass dispensing area called Mass Dispensing Area 39, so the three towns in the health district I mentioned, plus Essex, Chester, Killingworth, and Westbrook. So, that seven-town area, um, we have a centralized emergency point of distribution if we had to either do mass vaccination, mass distribution of antibiotics, that sort of thing. What we did two years ago is we drilled our mass dispensing plan in the regional middle school, Winthorpe Middle School in Deep River, and that worked out really well for us. So, my thought there is to also decentralize our mass dispensing area and look for a second point of dispensing at the Winthorpe Middle School in Deep River, which would be much more convenient to the Haddam residents, so that's, uh...that's the plan.
All right, I don't know. I have lots of documents and lots of info, so, you know.
I don't know, I mean, I have a lot of questions, but I don't know what to ask. It could take a long time. So, we could have like a public hearing?
Yes, we are. April 21st. So, um, and then to have a term of...
I would think, me, if I'd ask him at that hearing.
That's fine. And if you have any other questions or not...
Or I could write them down.
Yep. Sean sent him an email, and he can do that.
Yep.
Um, for presentation of numbers, you know, our percentage...
He said it was the same.
Well, we were...we were gonna go to $9.83, so it's at 9.60. So, um, I feel that, you know, we're gonna have more dedicated time, better service. The programs that they run, they run quite a few different clinics and programs, which are very important. Just the whole idea of the mass dispensing area, I thought that made a lot of sense, and the emergency area where we are. I have sat in on a board meeting, um, with the board, so I've been able to just see how they participate. And the other two things that I really liked a lot was that they actually have two doctors that sit on the board. So, I think, you know, granted, having a person from the health department for the town or the selectmen there, having those doctors there, I think, is really a plus for their district. Everything seems to run efficiently. I'll make copies, I have copies of both Chatham's financials and CRAD's financials. Um, you can see that there's quite a difference in the two. I'll make copies and show that to both of you also. So, I have all the data and I have all the backup, but obviously, I need approval to be able to go to a town meeting.
So, what do we...so, we just need to set a town meeting?
We're just...we're needing, yep. So, the Board of Selectmen needs to approve so that we can go to a town meeting.
Need a motion to set a town meeting for April 21st?
Correct. Yep.
All right, so I'll make a motion, we set a town meeting for April 21st to consider joining the CRAD.
So, he hasn't even seen it, I think. I got a question. When people tell you we're complaining about Chatham, and I'm talking about the day-to-day things, you're not getting, uh, service, things like that, and they came to the selectmen's office, they took the front. Do you feel those problems would be resolved?
Yes.
Okay.
I wouldn't be asking Jim to be here and recommending. I mean, we did look at going on our own, and we did have options of doing that. It...I just think that since, again, you know, they're...why reinvent the wheel? Their services and what they're doing is great, it works out well. Um, you know, some of the individuals we are looking at for health directors, um, seem to be of an age that might be retiring in the next three to five years, and I don't wanna have to have the town worry about that all over again. Jim spent a lot of time listening and addressing the concerns, um, that we have, so I feel very comfortable with this.
Would we have to sign a contract for some period of time?
No, it works the same way. So, if you join a health district, right?
Yeah.
We join, and then if we decided to leave the health district, same thing as with Chatham, we'd have to give notice before December 31st. I mean, obviously...
Effectively, you've got a one-year contract.
Correct. And just to make sure, again, I mean, it's not something that's...
We need to correct that a little bit. There's...if by statute, there's a 24-month...a town would have to be a member of the health district for at least 24 months before they could petition to leave, so it's almost like a...
Two-year.
A three-year.
Three-year.
It's two and a half-year commitment before you make a decision to leave, yeah.
Which does make sense, okay.
Yeah.
All right. But what we did is because, I guess, what Chatham started off, is that things were running pretty smooth at the beginning, so just to make sure that we're all on the same page, a lot of the concerns that we had, that's why we put this memo of understanding together, and that's why I make copies for both of you to look at, um, to just make sure that some of the same issues don't occur. And again, I think when you look at the financials, it'll...it'll really...it does make...so... And I wanted, you know, I just wanted Jim to be able to come tonight and for you to meet him and just, you know, be able to ask him questions if you had them, and it gives us time to put some other questions together for you to be able to ask. Okay? Mary?
Just one more thing. We're still working on our budget, and especially now, we...we approved the preliminary budget in January, but that did not include the town of Haddam, so now we're working on a whole new budget. I mean, it won't affect the local per capita rate, but it...a lot of the line additions will change, so I'll give you that draft budget, uh, just understand it's still in draft form.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right, so you started with a motion.
Motion, discussion.
All right.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jim, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the next on the agenda is reports. I do need to add, the trooper's report came in yesterday after the agenda was already printed, so I'm gonna add that on. First report is the animal control officer. It is definitely spring. We can tell by all of the things going on with the animal control officer. I guess the biggest comment is, you know, Facebook is working for Dawn to be able to, you know, people to communicate. I know there was a dog that had gone missing, and they were able to find them. I think just a reminder, just to kind of put it on the record, that because of the warm weather was here, and hopefully it will come back again, um, you know, there's a lot more people out and about with their animals, so just to make sure that they're respecting property lines and doing what they need to do. So, you know, she has, again, it looks like every day, but most of them are related to someone was taking a walk and, you know, they were walking with their dog, and a dog on a property came out and went after another dog, and those types of things. So, that's that.
Put on Facebook, the first place to look would be my house.
Goes to your house?
So, the first place anyone should look if they lose a dog, just go to my house.
And you know the warm weather was coming, because there was a skunk sighting, so we know that's coming.
I get those too.
Yeah. Senior Center Report, um, just a new thing. I guess, um, they're looking to start a chorus.
Thank you.
Bye, Jim. Um, there's six singers who have interest in starting Haddam chorus, so they're looking to, um, expand that and to see what other members might be interested.
Alice.
Alice should be there, yes. La 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 la. They're still doing tai chi. Again, I think anything that can go to benefit the seniors for there to be more activities would be a great thing, but, um, it looks like the same things that have been in place have been there, and only because Mr. Nork is here, it says a special thanks for you to posting a video of the Haddam Club 60 Facebook page, putting, I guess, a video up, so, good job, Jim.
Thank you.
Welcome. And, uh, that's pretty much it. And the state troopers, of course, I just want to add, as we all know, there's been some robberies and...going on, um, in the area, and, um, most of them, unfortunately, have been due to drugs, due to, uh, them needing money, um, to be drug-related. So, there was a bank robbery in Tylerville last week, um, the individual was apprehended, um, so that's a good thing. There's no personnel issues, there have been no personnel issues. There were two motor vehicle accidents with injuries, 10 without, 142 infractions, 19 warnings, no DUIs, and one on-site. Alarms have gone off, and, uh, there were seven disturbances, seven medical assists, and 213 patrol checks, and thankfully, there were no fatal accidents in the town of Haddam in the month of March, so that is the trooper's report. All right. We have a lot of tax refunds. I added today.
You have a lot of tax refunds.
Well, we, yes, I do, to read, yes.
Good job.
So, if I get scratchy, I apologize. All right, so, let's see, this one's motor vehicle. So, motor vehicle refund to Nissan Infinity for $278. Another, let's see, motor vehicle refund to James Octavek for $9.23. Try to do motor vehicles together. Another motor vehicle refund to Katie Kavanaugh for $103.17. Real estate. Another motor vehicle refund Ronald Kokoska for $14.16. Motor vehicle to Walter Zilligh for $7.61. Motor vehicle to Scott Martin for $70.73. Motor vehicle to Energy Tech for $30.89. Another motor vehicle to Sean Stamond for $6.89. That's all motor vehicles, so now we'll go to real estate. Real estate refund to Lauren Kud...Kundik and David Peterson for $65.57. Real estate refund to Leonard and Ellen Nicholas for $48.62. Another real estate refund to Leonard and Ellen Nicholas from 2012 for $47.17. Another real estate refund from 2014 to Ellen and Leonard Nicholas for $49.92. And the last one is motor vehicle supplement for Allison or Samuel Frecher for $119.3. All right, we have two more. This is a real estate, I'm not really sure who the refund is for, let me see, Kristen has put things crossed up. Okay, Daniel Ballack, real estate refund $2,754.81, and motor vehicle supplemental to Joyce Santoro for $42.40.
I'm just gonna watch and accept those tax refunds.
Okay.
All right.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along. So, very sadly...
Oh, don't start, you're gonna make me cry.
I received a letter of resignation...
I know, yeah.
From my wonderful assistant, who has served six select people in your timeframe, correct?
Six.
That she will be retiring on June 30th.
Who's the first?
March, the both.
March.
So, Alice is, um, this is difficult for her, but we all love her very much and we miss her well. Um, she's ready to do some traveling and spend some more time with her family and work on her crafts and continue to sing, so there's your...I couldn't say she would have time, I had to wait to get to the sign.
I did, I pretty much did.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's kind of like the senior saying, we've got an entire year over here looking, something to do.
Yeah.
Maybe take it over, I don't know.
Oh, you know.
Get one of those little hum bars you can get us going.
And I've hidden this letter a few times, and she's given it to me. I put a little sad face on it, and, uh, we're, uh, we're working on transitioning. We announced it at a staff meeting last week, um, so the staff is aware, will be looking to post the position, and hire replacement for her, and have a couple weeks' training, and get our new person on board, so it is mixed feelings to accept this resignation letter from Alice, a retirement letter, but, um, she's gonna be able to have a lot of fun now, I guess. So...
I always have fun, by the way. I make my own good time.
Sometimes at my expense.
She has. I'm gonna miss the hats and the singing. Okay.
Your birthdays.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I'll come back for them.
Well, we refuse...we don't have to accept it.
Do we?
We can refuse to accept it. I don't have to accept it. I have to accept her resignation.
You can refuse the resignation.
That's right. She just might not show up.
That's right.
She might not just show up. I told her she was bored, she could come back, but it didn't seem to work. All right, um, appointments. So, I received a letter, I guess in 2013, 2014, I think it goes back, it could even go back to 2012, um, that the tree warden in town needs to be certified. There's classes that they need to take, and there's things that they need to do, and Phil has been our tree warden. Phil does not want to take the classes. I can't blame him. So, Jim Puska has offered to go into the classes and be trained. The good news is that, um, you can be appointed as the tree warden, and even though the classes are only offered in September, you could actually be in the position for a year until you have to worry about the education requirement and the training requirement. So, Jim will go to a tree warden school in September. Also, Jim has said to me, well, you know I'm not gonna be here another 20 years, and I said, okay. So, because Jim reports to Liz Glidden, Liz Glidden also expressed interest in taking the class, so Liz will be the deputy tree warden, which will work out, because she, you know, Jim does report to her, so Liz offered to be the deputy tree warden. So, I am making a request. Phil's aware of all this, he knows, and he has, you know, said that he doesn't want to take the classes.
There's no budgetary issues.
There's no...
We got to track.
Nope. Nope, we're...we're good. So...
It's part of the final goal, to climb the trees, don't you?
I hope not.
On your heels as you go up the tree. That'd be worth it.
Yes. So, and, you know, Jim's around doing zoning and wetlands, so I think it's the perfect fit. It was actually Phil's recommendation to appoint Jim, and I think it was a good one, so, um, that's what I'm looking to do. So, I guess I...
So, we need a evening, okay?
Yeah, because right now, we appointed, um, Jim P...
You make the...
Yeah, all right. So, I'll make a motion to appoint Jim Puska as the tree warden and Liz Glidden as the deputy tree warden. So I'll make a motion to appoint Jim Puska as the tree warden and Liz Glidden as the deputy tree warden. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. So new business. Do you want to talk about both, the RFQ? You want me to do, you do?
I do.
I have both the laser and the RFQ. So you want to do the RFQ?
Sure.
All right.
For the record, I'm Liz Glidden, I'm a town planner. And a year, in January of 2015, the town received a grant from DECD in the amount of $300,000 for the jail. And there, after Liz was elected, we formed a buildings committee. And we've been talking about, I'm on that committee, Jeff Mubusba is the chair. And there's been discussion about what direction to go in. And one of the next steps is to hire a consultant who would do a reuse plan, a remedial action plan, and an assessment of the jail, in addition to some marketing studies and other things like that. And that would be paid forth by this DECD grant. So an RFQ went out, actually, I don't recall the exact dates, but it went out when the newspaper was, went on the website. And we got, actually, I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's all right. You have two RFQs to go, but it's okay.
And so we're waiting for response, the closing date on that is May 2nd. And then kind of changing gears, every 10 years, our plan of conservation and development needs to be updated. So we have a planning advisory commission that's gonna be looking at the POCD. And they put out an RFQ for $50,000 to update the plan of conservation and development. And we received three proposals. And we interviewed them, and we're recommending to the board of selectmen to go with the Horsley-Witten Group out of Rhode Island. And their, the search committee felt that they were the best with community engagement. They do a lot with sort of on-the-ground discussion, getting out, talking with the community, holding public meetings. And we're really innovative in their approach. One of the things that people generally seem to want is, the plant conservation is a good foundation, but maybe it needs to be amped up a little bit, changed, looked at in a different way. We don't want your typical template drop-in-the-language kind of plan of conservation and development. We want something that really reflects the feelings of the community in Haddam and that it's gonna propel conservation and development during the next 10 years. So the recommendation to the board of selectmen is to go with the Horsley-Witten Group.
That I do need a vote and a motion, because there's a contract that I need to sign. And we need to, we've been starting to put funds aside in capital. You guys refresh your memory on that in the budget, to be able to pay for that. So we need to sign a contract. The draft is going to be in the amount of $50,000. And this is also Liz, right, the committee was voted in, this is the recommendation?
Yes.
Right? And I have this info, if you'd like to see it. And there were three bids that were given. It's not a bidding process, but there were three companies that they got proposals from.
So Liz, is this, is it being paid out of the way or not being paid out of the way?
No, this has nothing to do with the grant.
Our accusations, though, I apologize. I started talking about the jail, but really what this was about was the POCD one. So, no, this is funded by the town.
So it's funded by the town. Every 10 years, it's done, right?
Yeah, it has to be done. It's a state statute. And if it's not done by January 24th, 2018, the state can withhold discretionary funds, like lots of the STE grants and things like that.
Is it the lowest bid?
Wasn't discussed.
Is that the lowest bid?
We didn't do lowest bids. We put out a request for qualifications, so we set the amount at $50,000, which was generally what the going rate was for this type of work. And then we asked for people to submit their qualifications. And we went based on basically what people, what the agencies could provide to us for that amount. And we felt that Horsley-Witten Group were providing the most services and the best services for that, for that amount.
Question, just wanna make sure, you said this, we're not part of the bidding process, knowing that we just had issue. Why is this, if you know this outside the bidding process, would this not?
It's the RFQ.
I can't hear Sean, I'm sorry.
Why is this outside of the bidding process? Why wasn't, if we have certain, I know other issues, other matters, we have a certain amount of money. If we go over a threshold, we have to put it out to bid. And you're saying this particular one being $50,000, we didn't have to put it out to bid?
We did it. We put it out to bid, but rather than doing an RFP, which is a request for proposals, we did an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications.
Just wanna make sure we do the proper, that's all.
So there's kind of two ways you can do it, right? You can say, we need to redo a POCD. Everyone submit your bids, tell us what you're gonna do and what your price is going to be. And then the other way to do it, which in planning is more common, is to say, this is the amount of money that we have. How are you gonna use this and what are your qualifications? And you kind of look at essentially, what are you getting for that money? And it's a way to hire the.
I understand those two processes. My point is, I wanna make sure we're complying by our charter.
We did.
Our charter says, if something is over a certain amount, it has to go out to bid. And I just wanna make sure we don't violate that, because it's already been a question of another issue. And I don't want to get into the middle of that again. If something's over a certain amount, it has to go out to bid. I just wanna make sure we're not violating the charter, the charter, by not putting this out to bid. I know you're gonna say we did put it out to bid, but I mean, put it out to low bid. And I'm asking, you guys, I don't want, so. The numbers above that threshold.
It's something that Liz can talk to the town attorney about. I'm pretty sure an RFQ would satisfy.
Yeah, according to Carrow.
The request for qualifications.
You know, we've done RF, we're doing RFPs and RFQs. We're going through, putting the legal notice out, we're putting it up on the website. We're getting at least three, if not more.
It's not.
It's not a bid.
It's not a bid. Charter says, this is all, it has to go out to bid. I don't want to have to come up here, if this is incorrect, and start all over. You know, I don't know.
I can look into that some more.
Double check.
It's never been a problem in the past, but.
No, I know, which is another reason why it's good that the charter's getting revised, because, you know, things change.
I have no problem voting on it, I have no problem with that company, I know they've done all the work. And I've seen their work, and they're a good company, it's not really an issue.
Okay.
But I just wanna make sure that if you're stating that we're complying with the statute by voting in this particular way, that's fine with me.
Okay. That's fine, I will double check on that. I do not want to waste any more of the town's money. Okay. So a couple of things came on last minute, one of which was the RFQ that Liz was talking about for the grant. And that's money that was given to us with a set dollar amount. So that's something that we have a set dollar amount on. The other piece is that we need to lease a large HP design jet. The work that was paid for the land use department to have everything scanned to go in. They need to be able to continue to do that with the maps on an ongoing basis, now that that project has been done. The other thing is that they need to be able to take those maps that are now all scanned and be able to print them out on a large format printer. The one that we currently have is not really working. And it isn't gonna be able to do what we need it to do. So we're looking to lease one. We looked around at several different prices. And the best price was with, we have to put down payment of $4,300. The money's already in the budget, so just no money's already put aside for it. This isn't gonna have to be a new request to the Board of Finance. $4,377 for a 48-month lease of $82 per month and a quarterly maintenance of $100 per quarter and a one-time processing fee of $95. Yeah, you always love the processing, it's like when you buy a car. So. They were very good on the pricing negotiated now with us. So I just need a motion.
So this follows into what we are capting the budget.
This is kind of the follow-up piece of what land use needs to be able to do. It was.
A and A, yeah, reducing it from.
That's what we're already doing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Please, yeah.
Yeah. Which is why I think we were able to negotiate the price. So I'd like to make a motion to be able to lease this plating printer, large format, for the land use department.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, I just wanna make sure we didn't add anything else on for Liz. I think that's it, I think you're done. Okay. So, Mr. Brooks, add on a town clerk grant.
Good evening.
The floor is yours.
I'm here, each year, we're allocated monies, we have to put in for monies from the state library. Usually the number's about $4,000 a year, which it is this year as well. I would like to take some of that money to hire a part-time, temporary person to work on one project. We're back filing a lot of our older volumes. We rented a scanner last year as part of our grant money from the state and scanned a lot of the volumes. Now we're trying to back file them, which entails, you look at each document and you have, come up with who's the grantor and the grantee, and you do some other information. You know, it's kind of a tedious job, and we have, I'm not sure, but 40 or 50 volumes worth to do. Anne and I have worked on it intermittently when we have time. And then part of our project last year was also, we're indexing 3,500 maps, so we kind of don't have enough time to do all that. We're sort of getting backed up. We're not sort of getting backed up, we are backed up. So I spoke with our vendor, New Vision, and they had a person in the past that did a lot of that kind of stuff. She recently, I guess, got an advanced degree in something and is leaving the company, so they don't really have anybody. But she did suggest to us, a gal who just left her town clerk position in Volantown. And she came highly recommended. So I had her come up for an interview, Anne and I spoke with her at length. Showed her what we needed done, she's very familiar with it, is familiar with the New Vision system as well. Quoted us a price of, she would be willing to do it off-site, you know, remotely at her residence, or I assume at residence, for $17 an hour. I have about $2,000 in the grant I could allocate towards that. She's never been like an independent contractor or anything like that before, so I spoke with Georgia. She thought the best way to do it would just make her a temporary part-time employee of the town, no expense to the town. Georgia said it would cost roughly $20 to set her up, just, you know, do the paperwork. And other than that, her salary would come out of the state library grant. And when the money runs out, so does she, which she understands, she's fine with that. So I'm asking if that's something that you guys would consider. I have to apply for the grant by the end of this month, that's why I'm here tonight and sort of showing this.
Yeah, so it is, there's only one caveat to that, which Scott didn't know, because Georgia discovered it afterwards, is that the grant can't be used to pay payroll taxes, you know, because of the issues with the whole 1099 issue before. So the Medicare taxes need to be paid separately by the town. So if you calculate $2,000 for what the Medicare rate is, it's gonna cost the town $29.
Can we afford it?
I don't know. So it isn't technically free, but it's $29. Yeah, and then the processing to set it up. But, you know, knowing that they have, their very busy time coming up, I mean, it's something that I think really needs to be done. This woman has a level, you know, Scott talked to me about a level of experience. I think she's willing to do it for a reasonable rate, especially being a town clerk, she knows what to look for. I think it's good.
What's the timeframe for you applying for potentially getting the grant?
Well, I'd apply by the end of the month. This would be my third grant I applied for, I anticipate successfully getting the grant. The money wouldn't show up till July 1st. I'm assuming this is done with by October, November, or she'll, you know, she'll use up that amount of money.
He needs to be able to.
Make time faster than that.
So make sure it's okay. That's why we're doing it now.
Oh, she was just asking us for permission to apply for the grant.
Right. I mean, if they give me the grant money, you know, then I gotta put it towards that person.
That's all.
I'm just gonna make a motion to authorize town clerk Mr. Brooks to apply for that grant.
Okay, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. All right, rant, okay. One more piece of business before, it's a public comment. Okay. So we finally got, the bids went out, so we have the process down. I know on this. Bids went out to have repair work on the Dishmill Road Bridge. We got back six bids. And the lowest bidder was McNich Brothers, who has done work previously for the town. Their bid came in at $329,256. The work will start June 1st. And I believe both of you have got copies of this, right? From Jacobson. Aaron went through everything, just to make sure, you know, the scope of the job, we're not leaving anything out. Everything is there. There's a checklist that we have, you guys can look at it on the back. It lists all the bids and then everything, you know, of the pricing of what they would do. So I have a letter to authorize them to start the work.
Is that number within our budget?
Yes, it is. It's actually, we're in good shape. It is lower, so we like that. Yep. So it is in the budget.
This is the State Highway Department project that we're supporting, or is this our project?
It's not a state project. I mean, it's not a highway, it's Dishmill. So it's a bridge repair.
Well, who?
We have to pay a percentage on it.
Yeah.
I remember this.
Yeah, we have a portion of ours.
So who's basically.
We're not supporting it. If I remember correctly, I remember when you.
We're supporting the state.
But I think this was the part that wasn't on the highway that we were sponsoring.
No, we're paying a portion of the total, total project.
Makes sense, because why break it up, right?
Who's the straw boss on the project? Us or somebody else, or the state?
The straw boss?
Because he was an old.
Well, I mean, yeah, no, I know he's a fresh.
He was an old speaker.
I know he is. I know I'm a baby boomer, but I'm not, I didn't get that, that debate up there.
I did, oh.
No, I wasn't inferring that, but, you know, you said it, not me. I'm your younger sister, how's that? I'm your younger sister, how's that? So they have 90 days. I mean, Jacobson's been really the one who's been staying on top of this. Phil's already taken, you know, they got the wetlands permit, they've already taken some trees down, they've prepped it. This was the issue with the trees and we had to wait for the bats and, I mean, this has been going on a while. So, you know, Aaron's really taken the lead on this. I mean, the scope of the work is pretty specific. You know, there was.
I don't have direct recollection exactly, I remember this coming, we just.
Yeah, this is, I guess, been up for a while. Like this has been out there.
Put the money aside for.
Yeah, the money is definitely aside for it. I mean, they had the drawings, they got everything that they needed.
Need more time?
I was hoping that your members would be, I wasn't here, so.
You weren't here, so it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Few more.
I mean, we have, just so you know.
Few more time, Bob? Need more time to look into it?
Well, it's just a question.
It's $565 for the total project. $400 including the construction, that was in the planning. We get back $267,000. And we have the $329 to cover it. $242 went towards the town engineering costs. I mean, I can, I can go back to Jacobson. If you tell me the questions you have.
Who's gonna call the data, who's gonna direct the day-to-day operation?
Okay.
That's the question.
That's the question. Jacobson, the town engineer?
Well, that's just the town's doing it. But we're only part of the work. Does the other person agree with that?
All right, let me find out. I just, you know.
We have the timeframe to get this done, it's all special meeting?
If we have to, we have to. I mean, it's fine. I mean, this just, to be honest with you, this just came today. So the finalizing, I mean, I knew the bids were in, the bids were due last Thursday and we opened them and we prepped everything.
I think there's an argument as to who we're gonna go with.
We had that special meeting, we do that.
Well, let me just see if I can see, just give me one second. If it's on any of this documentation. Yeah, I think it has to do with the grant, how the work is done. But I will get, you know, I will find out for you about Lucian on the day-to-day. I think it's Macknick, but I will confirm that. I will do that in the morning. And if we can hold till our next meeting, we'll do it. If not, we'll call, we'll call a special meeting. Okay?
Go.
All right. All right. I think that's it. I think we have everything. Any other new business? No? Okay, public comment.
I can answer Bob's question a little bit, if it helps you guys. The bridge is a town road, which we, if you guys remember, we took from the DEP about a year and a half ago. Macknick was obviously the contractor that was hired through the bid process. Jacobson is the straw boss in this instance. He'll be making sure that Macknick does what they need to do. I do have one quick question about Scott Brooks', the town clerk's grant, or the idea of the grant. And I think it's great that he's been really trying to get all those old documents scanned in. I do wonder about an employee doing, taking all those very important documents to their home, which is not insured for such a task, especially outside of the town clerk's office and the vault. I'm just wondering if maybe we should look into that before we make that decision. Usually these companies that you hire, they have big insurance policies to take care of anything like fire, car accidents, things of that nature. So I just give my concern for that. But I am in favor of the project, as he's been really trying to do a lot of that work. But I think having her take them to her house is a little bit, little bit different. Thank you.
Give me a hand up, sir?
No, I'm just scratching. Feeling from the hair that's still there. I'll make a motion for it.
On favor?